Brandon McCullough will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
One nation.
Under God, you're god. Invisible. The land of justice.
Thank you, Councilmember McCullough. Good evening and welcome to the 1,895th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. This is a regular meeting, it's a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Monday, May 11, 2020. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Councilmember Donavick.
Present.
Councilmember Jolly.
Present.
Councilmember Toy.
Here.
Vice President Barr.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
President McIntyre.
Here, we have all members, all members of the council present this evening. This time, I'd like to present the minutes from the 1,894th regular meeting of the city council that was held on April 15, 2020. Council?
I'm moved.
Sorry.
So moved. Seconded.
Councilmember White moved. Councilmember Jim Jolly seconded. Any comments? All right, would the clerk please go ahead and take the vote on approval of the minutes from April 15, 2020?
Councilmember McCullough. Councilmember Donavick.
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly.
Aye.
Councilmember Toy.
Aye.
Vice President Barr.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President McIntyre.
Aye. Notes are approved unanimously. At this time, I'd like to go to the council if anyone has any personal announcements, tributes, or recognitions they'd like to make this evening. All right, well, I have several. The first are some birthday wishes to be made. The first is to our colleague Jim Jolly, who celebrated his birthday, I believe that was yesterday, April 26. Happy birthday, Councilman Jolly. It looks from Facebook like you had a good day and we wish you all the best. Our council vice president, Scott Barr, has a birthday coming up on May 6. Happy birthday, vice president. We wish you a great day and a great year ahead. And finally, our mayor, Maureen Miller-Brosden, has a birthday coming up on May 8. Happy birthday, mayor, and we hope too also that you have a wonderful day and a great year ahead.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will introduce the department heads who are with us via Zoom. It's always a little bit tricky to do this when I don't, when I can't look at everybody, but we have our clerk Susan, our city clerk Susan Nash, and I'm going to introduce all of them who are on Zoom, and some of these folks are not ones who are always, who are in regular attendance, but I'm going to introduce all the department heads we have with us this evening. Casey O'Neil, our Director of Information Technology Services. Paul Bernier, our city attorney. Mark Terramina, our Director of Economic Development and Planning. Also heading up our donation, our donation site at the Recreation Center, and one of the co-directors of the Together Livonia Cares program. We have Sarah Kasprowicz from our city council office, who's taking the place right now of Judy Preby, our Legislative Director, sought medical leave. We have Mr. Todd Slentik, our city engineer. And I think that's it. Did I introduce the clerk and our clerk Susan Nash? So I think I covered everyone. I have two announcements to make this evening. One is the housing, the Livonia Housing Commission will be holding a public hearing on May 4 regarding the Community Development Block Grant Programs, also known as CDVG, and city council will be holding two public hearings on 15 regarding two rezoning items. At this time, we go to audience communication. If anyone from the audience would like to speak with the council on any item not in this evening's agenda, now is an opportunity to do so. All right, hearing none and seeing none. This time, we go to reports from the mayor and other city officials, and I know that the mayor would like to address the council and the public this evening. So Mayor Brosden?
Thanks, Council President McIntyre, and good evening to all of you. Council President McIntyre, Vice President Barr, and all the council members present. On behalf of myself and the rest of Livonia's leadership, first of all, let me start by saying you all look healthy, which is the number one thing that we all ask each other these days when we say, how are you? It means something so much more profound, and you truly do look healthy. Know that in our days, much like yours, we are spending them just exhausting our data packages, jamming up all of our internet lines, and trying to make business happen just like this, online, all day, every day. This COVID virus from city side is consuming all of our waking hours and leaving us with a lot of sleepless nights. But in saying that, I also say that I could not be working with a better team than the leadership team that I have here at City Hall to try to navigate this uncharted territory that we have. So tonight, I want to spend just a minute telling you a little bit about some of the things that we are managing and making sure that you're up to speed on all of those things. And I just want to commend Council President McIntyre for her briefing as you were all entering the Zoom room tonight and just kind of filling people in as they came along and what was going on. And she attends all of our Monday morning meetings where we gather as a leadership team, and she's really done an amazing job keeping you up to speed. So first of all, the most important issue that we were dealing with last week was really a clear understanding that as a result of COVID-19, this pandemic is going to leave communities all across the nation in some pretty dire financial conditions. And Livonia will not be exempt from that when this is all sorted out. So we begin, we've begun to take some of the measures necessary to create a bit of a program and to hopefully relieve some of the financial hardship that we know is coming our way. So the first step in that process began last Saturday where we furloughed 234 employees. That's 37% of our workforce. It's an enormous chunk of people. And it was a program that was put into place with a great deal of deliberation. We call it the Workforce Protection Program because it's designed to do exactly that. It's designed to furlough people, which allows us to keep a connection with our employee workforce because we continue to pay their healthcare, their dental, their optical, and their life insurance benefits. The idea is too, is that as we begin to see the COVID pandemic decreasing in its severity, that we'll be able to bring people back. This is not a program that is designed to scale back in our staff in any sense or of the imagination because we understand that coming into this situation, we came into it with a very tight workforce. We have a lot of job openings that we had not filled yet, and so we want to make sure that we're able to bring back a talented, experienced workforce. And we do believe that this plan will allow us to do that. This plan allows us to kind of plan for what we expect to be that downturn in our city finances while allowing employees to take advantage of some of the unemployment benefits that have been enhanced during the COVID pandemic. So our expectation is that we're going to see less money coming in in terms of state share revenue. We're going to see the gas tax funding decrease. As a result, our Act 51 funds are expected to go down. Eventually, we expect that we're going to see less property taxes due to an unemployment-driven hits to our property values, our real estate. And these are all things that our budget depends upon. So as we brace for that, we are also working very hard, though, like I say, to maintain a strong workforce. So one of the key components of the Workforce Protection Program is that department heads maintain communication with each one of the employees, either department heads or supervisors, on a regular basis. We are concerned about people. We're concerned about what we're sending folks out into. There's a lot of unknowns out there, a lot of insecurities, and people have been on, you know, stay-at-home, stay-safe mode for quite some time now, and it's beginning to take a toll on folks. So we think, just as we're trying to take care of a number of our other populations in our community, we certainly don't want our workforce to not have that same type of care around them. So department heads have been asked to maintain really strong communication. In terms of the next steps in our plan, today, we asked all department heads to take a look at a cost containment plan, something that looks at how they're going to be spending capital as we proceed through the rest of the budget year with an understanding that we're going to need to cut costs, that some programs and projects and contractors may need to be put on hold for the remainder of this year. Some projects may need to be pushed off until next year. They may need to be eliminated completely. They may need to be downsized. Some of the criteria are that, number one, we don't want to push anything off that's going to cost us too much more in the long run. We don't want short-term losses for, or short-term gains for long-term losses here. So we're asking department heads to really give this their best analysis and to be back in touch with us toward the end of the week so that close to the beginning of next week, we've got a cost containment program that we're prepared to enact. We're also looking at any other recommendations for cost cutting that department heads may have as well. So this is just the beginning. When we talk about reducing our staffing numbers and putting people on furlough, that's just step one of a much larger plan. And it really is a matter of peeling back the layer of the onion and putting a great deal of deliberation into everything we do, not doing it haphazardly, but really putting some time and study into it, but not too much time and study that we don't get the job done. Communities throughout southeast Michigan have begun to look at Livonia as a benchmark for how things should be done, and that was the case this weekend. A neighboring community contacted us and just wanted to know, what is the plan? Can you give it to us on paper? We're willing to take it, and we just want to roll with it. So as a result, result of the work that we did, other communities are able to put this in place in a lot quicker fashion. We had a great deal of support, and I don't want to forget this point, in working with our unions. Had it not been for their willingness to sit down early with us and talk with us about the Workforce Protection Program, it probably would not be in place. So everybody really came together around that. I expect that everybody will again come together around the cost containment program that we're going to be discussing in the coming week. The second big thing that we were consumed with last week was a launch of our long-term care plan for our nursing home facilities. You know, we have been watching the data coming in in terms of numbers of deaths and numbers of cases of COVID in Livonia, and our numbers seemed inordinately high. And we quickly recognized that while the state and the county were not good at parting with information about where patients were coming from, we were able to derive some of that data, some of those data points just from looking at our run data. So we attacked the problem from the front end, quickly got an understanding from our fire chief that close to 70% of our runs were being made to our long-term skilled nursing facilities in Livonia. And so as a result of that, we began to use some of our contacts largely through Mark Terramina's office because he's been in touch with all of these organizations when they began their operations here in Livonia. He exercised some of those relationships, and conversations began between Mark's office and our long-term care facilities, quite honestly, between our fire department and our long-term care facilities. They've been working with these operations for years, just talking to them, going in, seeing what was going on, and quickly realizing that there were some shortfalls there. So as you began to see, you know, the headlines ramp up about the number of deaths that we're seeing in these long-term care facilities, Livonia was well on its way to creating a program and implementing a program and just kind of putting some fiber around things that already existed in our community. And we officially launched Together Livonia Cares. This is a joint effort between the city of Livonia, our fire department, our planning department. We also have St. Mary Mercy Hospital as one of our partners in this effort as well. We meet with them on a weekly basis on a phone call that they've been putting together for the past five weeks, talking with long-term care facilities in their organization and those that they do referrals to. So that was the beginning of some of this conversation as well. Livonia is unique, we believe, in the fact that we have 22% of all of Wayne County's long-term care facilities in our city. So while we might not have gotten the response from the state or the county that we had wanted or needed in terms of getting PPE and instruction and attention to these facilities, we decided that we were going to jump in as a city and just try to our very best to take control of the situation. So the, we went in with a soft approach, which usually works really well in Livonia and has proven to work really well. In this case, we offered to come in and do five things. We offered to come in and talk to them about how are they getting their PPE? Can we help them in any way? Oftentimes, Mark and Chief Hevner would bring PPE from our stockpile with them into these conversations. We assisted them in training their employees and how to use it properly. Many of these facilities don't fall under the same criteria and guidelines as hospitals do, so they haven't had that kind of training in the past. So we wanted to make sure that everybody, from the nurse's aide all the way to the director of the organization, knew how to properly use PPE. We also wanted a chance to talk to them about what we've learned in terms of best practices in sanitizing space. You know, we know the COVID virus lives on surfaces. So in the city, we've become experts at how to manage surfaces and how to clean them on a frequent basis and what products are working and what methodologies are working. So we wanted to be able to bring some of those best practices to them. We also wanted to assist them in the screening process because we know that while testing is valuable, testing is most valuable when it's administered to somebody who's exhibiting symptoms. So how do you then find people that are willing to admit that they're exhibiting symptoms? We understand that going into the nursing care environment prevents us, presents us with a kind of a double-edged problem. One is that you have a high resident population, concentration of elderly people in one spot, the most vulnerable population in dealing with the COVID-19 virus. But number two, they're being served oftentimes by the second highest hit population in the COVID by, in the COVID virus, and that is the African-American population, many of whom are nurses aides in working in facilities that we have here in Livonia. So we have a very volatile population that we're really trying hard to make sure that we're educating and screening. So you've got people that are working hard every day, and they don't want to leave their residents unattended, so they're not always willing to admit that they may have some symptoms. So we talk about how do you screen properly for this? And then where do you go to get the testing? Because while we often hear that testing is at a premium, we do have testing available at St. Mary Mercy Hospital. We really do believe that we have enough opportunity for people who are presenting with symptoms to be tested. The key is to know when the symptoms are there, so the screening helps to determine that. And then finally, we want to make sure that each of these facilities is abiding by the executive order in maintaining and isolate a properly established isolation unit. The governor's executive order before this last one indicated that every facility had to either have their own isolation unit or they had to be referring patients into a regional isolation unit. So for those facilities and properties that have perhaps more than one site, they could then determine that one of their sites was going to be the isolation quarantine unit serving COVID patients. Some of the facilities in Livonia don't have that opportunity, so we really needed to go in and either teach them, number one, how to set that quarantine area up properly, or encourage them to use the Rock Financial Showcase, which is out in Novi, which just opened up on Friday with 250 beds. It is our goal to work with these organizations to make sure that solid quarantine is established. We've talked with our fire chief, and it is probably, in terms of priorities, the number one priority and the number one way that we're going to be able to beat back this virus in that population. So we've been amazingly well received. Mark Terramina's done a great job, along with Chief Hevner, of getting us through the front door. We introduced the concept in a letter from me to all of the directors, and right now, we have a target of 20 facilities in Livonia. Those are both long-term care facilities as well as senior living, memory care facilities, occupational therapy, our own senior housing units. Wherever we find congregations, congregations of seniors living together, they have fallen into this Together Livonia Cares program. We are looking at expanding the program to adult foster care homes, which would add an additional 48 opportunities for us to go in and bring some education, some training, to try to connect people with the resources that they need. And again, I do feel like Livonia is in a unique position here, that if we don't take these aggressive measures, what we'll find is that communities all around us begin to come out of COVID-19, where our numbers are still tracking at a greater rate, and we might not bounce back as fast without an aggressive program like this. So I do truly appreciate the expertise that we've been able to bring. In the meantime, we do, we are doing our best to keep up with the executive orders that are coming from Governor Whitmer's office. And obviously, the two big areas that we heard about last week in the Friday announcement that changed people's lives were lawn service, that residents could now hire their lawn services under some restrictions to provide service for them. And then secondarily, golf courses opened up this weekend. In the meantime, though, it's important to note that while those slight changes and modifications to the executive order have been made, that Livonia buildings are still closed. We are not, the stay-at-home, stay-safe order is still in place, so we are all still operating remotely, with the exception of the lobby to the police department. That remains open. And only critical employees are actually at their desks working, and that's not on a regular basis, it's rather infrequent. Most all of our work at this point is being done remotely. We continue to maintain our situation reports, and I think that provides the most accurate data. Two weeks ago, we introduced a new dashboard that has been amazingly well received. We tapped into John Hopkins data, and we're bringing that to residents, which provides more real-time data for folks, and we're layering on top of that our Livonia data as well. So again, Livonia finds itself on the cutting edge of municipalities and how we're, how we're constantly providing information. There is not another city out there that is doing it quite that way. So in terms of those situation reports, we are up to now 108 deaths with the report that we got today, and we're over 650 cases in Livonia. I will tell you that every day, I get a call roughly at around 4:30 from Wayne County, and it is the worst part of my day. I keep a little stack of Post-it notes in my purse with a pen next to it, and my job is to write down who's died. 97-year-old Caucasian male at St. Mary Mercy Hospital. And some days, I write down eight names. Some days, I write down four descriptors, not names. And every day, I finish that exercise with a moment of silence because it's not just a number, it's a person. It's a grandpa, it's a grandma, it's a mom, it's a dad, it's an aunt and uncle, a best friend. It's a real person. And I think sometimes we get lost in talking about some of the issues around COVID-19 that are not nearly as important as the people. So at the end of that exercise, in that moment of silence, my number one thought is that we must remain focused. And if we remain focused on how best to mitigate the loss of life, we will come out of this strong. We will be able to say we did our very, very best. And when we lose focus on life as being the most important concept, we find ourselves using our energy in a way that is not most productive. So know that your city leadership team has that as their focus. And as a result, we really do believe that we are going to be able to make a difference. I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to see if there are any questions.
I'd just like to remind the audience, to those of us who've joined via Zoom, that you're welcome to put your hand up if you have any questions that you would like to ask the mayor at this time. Counsel, anyone have any questions for the mayor? Thank you, mayor, for that outstanding and comprehensive update for us and for the public, and thank you for the exceptional job you're doing and for the leadership teams doing. As I express to councils, I've expressed in meetings, and to everyone that I talk to, the cities, excellent.
Thank you, Council President McIntyre. I do appreciate it. I also want to extend my appreciation to all of you. I know that you all have a role in conveying this message to people, and people come to you constantly wanting to know what we're doing and how we're doing it. And you've all done an exceptional job in stepping up and making sure that you, number one, understand what it is we're doing and that you understand the details of it, and you're remarkable communicators along those lines. So thank you very much.
Thanks.
I am going to leave you. I've been here since 7:00 this morning, so I'm heading out.
All right, have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. All right, I don't believe we have any other reports from the city officials, so at this point, we'll go, we'll move ahead with our consent agenda. Items, agenda items one through eight are listed on the consent agenda. They'll be voted on as one item. It doesn't mean that they are any less important or more important. They're any less important than any other items on the agenda, but rather, when they were covered in our study session, they were determined not to be controversial in nature. Counsel?
So moved.
All right, do we have?
Or?
We have support from Councilmember Donavick. Would the clerk please take the vote on the consent agenda?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavick?
Aye.
Councilmember Jolly?
Aye.
Councilmember Toy?
Aye.
Vice President Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember White?
Aye.
President McIntyre?
Aye, and the consent agenda is, is approved unanimously. I was negligent in not mentioning, we did have one other submitted, not a verbal report, but we do have communication from our Department of Finance dated March 31, 2020, regarding financial statements for the city of Livonia as December 31, 2019. And I'd like to request that those be received and placed on file for the information of. And we do not have any other agenda items this evening. I don't know if anyone from the audience would like to address the council, take this opportunity for second audience communication on any items not in this evening's agenda. I don't see any hands raised. I do, before I, before I ask for a motion to adjourn, do want to mention three things. I knew we had a rather somber report from the mayor, mayor coming up, but three things I'd like to mention. The first is, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish very longtime Livonia resident Manny Pollock a very, very happy 90th, happy 90th birthday. Manny will be celebrating his 90th birthday this Thursday on the 30th of April. He's been a Livonia resident for, I believe, 58 years. Manny is exceptional in many ways. He's known informally as the mayor of the Rec Center because he's there every day. Sunday, working out diligently with a number of his friends, and he's just always knows what's going on, and it's just a joy to everyone who knows it. But Manny was widowed in his, I think in his 30s, leaving him with seven children to raise. Truck driver, a proud member of the Cheaters. He was awarded Father of the Year one year by The Observer because of the exceptional way that he stepped up to raise his seven children. And all seven of his children are great successes and wonderful people. And a few years ago, two years ago, they made a remarkable film for him on his birthday. I've had the pleasure of knowing several of his, of his kids very, very well, but he's an exceptional man with an exceptional family. I wish that we could have had him into council, to our, to a medium person to wish him a happy birthday, but if you could all just keep a good thought and, and think of our longtime resident Manny Pollock who's contributed to the city for so many years, and his kids have too. So happy birthday, Manny, from, from the city that loves you and so happy that you've called us home for so many years. The second thing is a public service announcement. If you're out walking, and I know many of us are taking advantage of the opportunity to get out, please be aware that apparently this is a banner year for ticks. On Saturday, Brian and I took advantage of the beautiful weather and went over to Mayberry and took the dog for a walk. The dog did not receive a tick bite, however, I did. And Saturday morning, found a tick in my arm. And after I posted some things on Facebook, I've heard that the ticks are early and they're everywhere. So if you're out walking in any of our areas off the sidewalk, please watch out for ticks. And the third thing is, I can't, I can't remember. So I should have written all, I should have written down all, oh, I did remember the third thing. And this is something that is called to my attention when it needs to be by our former mayor, Jack Anger-Bretson, who not only is a former mayor of Livonia, a former city council president, former planning commission member, and a very- council president, former planning commission member, and a very proud retiree from the Air Force. And that is, it is not the pledge, it is the pledge of allegiance. So Mayor Anger-Bretson, if you're watching this evening, I want you to know that I may have just referred to it informally and appropriately as the pledge at the beginning of the meeting, but it is indeed the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. So with that, I've asked for a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
By Vice President Barr, support from Councilmember Kathy White, and I think we can show, safely show 7 on that. We are adjourned, and we will reconvene at 8 o'clock and half an hour for the study session. Thank you.